All right. Good morning, everyone. I'll call to order Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, June the 3rd.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right. If you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
To the republic which stands.
One nation, one God.
Under God, indivisible, justiciable.
A liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now invocation, I'll check overtime Pastor Chesbro, are you on? All right. I am. Are you able to find him?
Sure. No, I'll just go with it.
Okay.
Yeah. Our dear only father, we do thank you for this day as we continue to conduct the business of the county. All the things that we've been experiencing in the COVID, the race riots around the country. We know that all through these things that you are in control. We think, we thank you that we live in a community where all colors, all races, all people are respected and and that we all each care for each one another. Just be with all the business that's conducted today. Help all of the decisions to be made in your will. Amen.
Thank you. All right. Brings us to Correspondents and Organizational Business. Today, we have a proclamation for Franklin County Industry Appreciation Month. Let's see, is Paul on?
Yes, sir, I am.
Hey, would you like to say anything before I read this?
Well, I, this is Industry Appreciation Month and it's a privilege and an honor for you all to consider this proclamation. Our industry is obviously critical to our community. We have a number of industries that provide about 38% of the employment countywide. So obviously they're very critical to our economic health. In addition to that, they also do wonderful work as we've seen through this pandemic, supporting our community, our food banks, and a lot of folks in need. And they've done an exceptional job, I must say, in protecting their workforce. So very proud of our, our area industry and our partners and appreciate your consideration of this proclamation.
All right. Well, you know, seeing more appreciation and support for local existing businesses than probably I've ever seen since you've been here and really appreciate that. We spend a lot of time talking about and trying to attract new businesses, but too often the existing ones are, or at least certainly feel not appreciated. So I'm glad to see you working to change that. And let's read a proclamation. Whereas Franklin, whereas Franklin County is pleased to have a thriving community of industries to support the local economy. These industrial companies provide essential employment opportunities for the citizens of Franklin County. These industrial companies provide local revenue from which the entire citizenry benefit. Industrial businesses make considerable contributions to our families and communities, often improving the overall quality of life. We recognize and appreciate these industrial businesses. Now therefore, the Board of Franklin County Commissioners do hereby proclaim June 2020 as Industry Appreciation Month. We would need a motion to approve the proclamation.
Commissioner Howard, I make a motion to approve the proclamation.
All right. Is there a second?
Vice Chair Stottlemyre, second.
All right. Commissioner Stottlemyre, seconded.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you all very much. It's deeply appreciated.
All right. Anybody else, any other commissioners want to say anything before we move on from this one? All right. Derek, you have anything for Correspondents and Organizational Business other than that?
No, sir.
All right. We'll move down to public comment today. We have a public comment. I believe Brian Webster, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I am. I'll just read the public comment part and then let you go on your way. Citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes. The commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county business and public comment is not permitted in regards to personal matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become an agenda item at a later date. So go ahead, sir.
Morning. My name is Brian Webster. I live at 1108 Osborne Road. I've been a resident of the county for about 25 years. First, I would like to take a moment of reflection in regards to the state of affairs of our country. Can we take a moment? Thank you. Are you there?
Yep, we are.
First, my agenda is to Derek Brown is not my intentions or my desire to reproach you on any issues of the past. On the contrary, I would like to relay my congratulations to him and welcome back Derek. As to the matter of setting appointment with our superintendent of Rosen Bridges, David Lee. It is my intention to set an appointment with him at his convenience to a date where we can work out the differences in the matters which have been given to me. That's it.
All right then. Thank you. We'll move down to consent agenda. Today, your consent agenda would include tax change orders in the amount of negative $199.09. Claim vouchers in the amount of $207,000. 207, 527, 207,527.19 cents. Minutes from our May 27th meeting. Payroll for May 29th in the amount of $1,149,798.82. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Commissioner Dickinson, I move to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. Items of business today would be to consider approval requests from Ottawa Main Street Association to donate TGT, that's transient guest tax funds for landscaping on downtown Ottawa street corners. Go ahead, Derek.
Yeah, Commissioner Dunn and Commissioner Dickinson were approached by Sharon Geis regarding the street corners in downtown Ottawa. She has requested that the county make a donation of TGT funds to assist with cleaning those corners up. And so anytime we get requests like this involving TGT funds that are somewhat out of the normal course, we bring them to you. I will walk you through the analysis that Casey and I use anytime these requests come in. I think the first question that I ask is, is this a legal use of transient guest tax funds? I think it is conceivable that enhancing street corners could lead to more people coming into Ottawa. Whether or not it's likely is a different question, but it is conceivable. We have used transient guest tax funds on landscaping out at the visitor's center. So use of funds for this purpose is an entirely unprecedented. So I would say it is legal. And so if we get through that step of the analysis, the next step, and this is what I think the board needs to decide today, is what is the likelihood that use of funds for this purpose is going to lead to more tourism in Franklin County? And so I think about the recent decision we've made with regard to the old courthouse. People visit that courthouse all the time. I've said and will continue to say that that is the premier tourist destination in Franklin County. Constantly have people coming to that building from out of the county looking at it. And so putting transient guest tax funds into it, I would consider that to be a good use. And, and the board today, I would ask to contemplate, you know, our usage of funds for this purpose, is it reasonably likely to bring people into the community? I spoke with Sharon yesterday, might have been the day before. I believe she is on the call to talk more about this. So I will turn it over to her.
Thank you. And can you all hear me?
Sure can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Yes, I might just give a little history how I came to be involved with this. My husband's been involved with Main Street for years. And of course, he has a business downtown called Take It Outside. And he and I have the bed and breakfast at the corner of 7th and Cedar called The Peated Lady. Steve has taken care of one of the corners at First and Main for a couple of years now. And last year, when the city went through and did the water lines, the corners really, many of them got in really bad shape because no one was able to work on them last year. And I think if you drive through downtown Ottawa, you notice that the corners just don't look very good. And they have not looked good for a couple of years. Last year in September, there was a, quite a push to try and clean up the corners before the car show so that our community have presented a, a nice front, if you will. And I think that many people have spent a good deal of money to include the city to try and make our, our streets and so forth look nice. In particular, the corner at Fourth and Main where the courthouse is, has gotten in really bad repair. And so we have as a committee, which by the way, the committee includes Brenda Hayden, Jimmy Atkins, my husband Steve and I, and there are other people that have, are, yes, well, there's a lot of volunteers helping with the corners. And I don't want to try to list all those because I'll miss somebody if I do. But in any case, the corner at Fourth and Main in particular has gotten in really bad shape. And, and we have approached Bones Landscaping to try and help us get that to the place where we can even plant it. Long term, we have visited with Loma Vista and they have come up with some plans using both perennials and annuals. That we're, our hope is this weekend, we have a workday and we're going to try and get that corner groomed to a place where the community could see long term, a plan that would give us some continuity throughout Ottawa. And the plan long term would be to do something that would be more easily sustained, including both perennials and annuals. One of the problems that we have seen is we can get volunteers to come in, we, on a, on a particular day to do some work. But maintaining the corners throughout our hot Kansas summer is a challenge. So I sent out a proposed budget that included paying someone part-time to water plants and weed them throughout the summer. We would continue to depend on volunteers to do the planting. We hope to have the volunteers do especially some sprucing up in August and early September when we have the tractor show and the car show, God willing. And now we have a bicycle event that will hopefully bring people in to stay and do the, and that's called Rhythm and Ride. In case you're not aware of that, that will be in August. But we would like to have the downtown look attractive and, and make people want to not just look at the courthouse, but wander around downtown and, and spend money in our shops and, and have, have people say when they go away that Ottawa, Kansas is a cute little town. The pleasant and lots of places to eat and lots of things to see. The city of Ottawa does give Main Street $2,000 towards the landscaping. Kansas State Bank has committed $500, an additional $500 if we actually get something done down there so that they can see that we're making progress. American Eagle has committed $1,000. Lloyd Builders, who owns the corner, you know, Josh Walker put in the place at the Corner Market. He's committed $100. And we do have some other requests out. We've gotten plants donated from Cow Valley before they closed their place on the south end of town. And Loma Vista has done some plans for us. And they will be donating some plants. Initially, I had spoken with Ian about $1,000 and then I had increased that to 2,000. At this point, because we've had such a good response with volunteers and donations, I would say that if the county would put in $1,000, hopefully that will put us in a good place where we can do some landscaping that will be sustainable. And, and then we can move forward. Our committee is looking long-term, we're looking short-term to just get them cleaned up and looking better for this season. But we're also looking long-term that next year, assuming we don't have another pandemic, we would start earlier getting those corners cleaned up so that come, they would already be looking nice. We could get ahead of the weeds and the grass and so forth. And we may, we would like to, in the future, ask either the county or the city to help us with some of the weed control. The gal from Loma Vista says that probably both the county and the city have access to some pre-emergent spray that would prevent us from getting into the position that we are in now, where so many of those beds are completely overrun with, with weeds and grass. And just getting, especially that corner, Fourth and Main, to a place where it can even be planted is too much work for volunteers. You really need to have some professional equipment. But Bones Landscaping has agreed to come in and do that for this Friday. And then we do have a workday scheduled for Sunday morning, starting at 8:30. Hopefully until noon, we have, we'll, we'll have mulch and so forth down there for people to use that was donated by the city. So yeah, that's, that's it, I think, in a nutshell. So I would be happy to try and answer questions if anyone has them.
All right. Is this a one-time or a reoccurring request?
I would like it to be reoccurring. But to be honest, I, I, I think right now it just needs to be this year and then next year, hopefully, if we get started sooner and we have a, if we don't come up with a more sustainable plan than what we have now, I, I won't continue to be involved because it's, it's a pretty daunting task right now. So I would say just consider this year and then if we're sustainable, I will come, someone might come back next year. But let's, let's look at it for this year.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. How many corners are there?
20.
Commissioner Dickinson, again, two of those are on the block that county courthouse is on. Has the county done anything with those in the past?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm not a great expert. And the north, the northeast corner of the courthouse is taken care of by Stan Schiffler.
Where the veterans memorial is?
No, I think that's the southeast corner. That's the one that has gotten in such battle.
That's too bad because that's the one that really shouldn't look nice.
Yeah. And the memorial itself, the landscaping is beautiful, but then on that corner, it's, it's not good. Part of that is there was a woman named Jane from Pomona that did a lot of that. And she has gotten to the point where she can't do that anymore.
All right. The other commissioner, or any more commissioner questions?
This is Commissioner Dunn. I had a thought, but I'm just going to throw it out there. I've had a lot of requests for people wanting bricks for the memorial. I was wondering if we just take that Fourth, Fourth and Main Street, shrubbery and everything out of there and have it available to sell more bricks to people for the memorial. That's just a thought of mine. As far as the shrubbery was concerned, I was talking with Sharon the other day about it and I thought maybe the, you know, for the courthouse, Fourth and Main, we might be interested in taking care of that corner one way or the other. So I don't know about the rest of the, I don't know about the rest of the corner, but we have to, I think, look at the requests in general, that we might get a bunch of requests from our towns around the county that might want to do something to beautify their towns too. So be another concern. So anyway, that's just some of my thoughts.
That's Commissioner Stottlemyre. Kind of going along with Roy there, what his last statement was. We do have a lot of other towns in the county and they have main street beautifications. I know Weldfield does. I know Richmond does. And I can't speak for all of them, but I know those two do for sure. And I, because I don't travel to Queensburg all the time and, and Pomona all the time. So, and I know Pomona does, come to think of it. Now, I, I do know I've seen it in Pomona. So when and if we do approve, we better get ready because we're going to get a flood of everybody's wanting to have help doing their main streets and beautification. And that's kind of, when I started 20 years ago, my first statement was, guy asked me, what are you going to do for us? And I said, I won't do nothing for you that I wouldn't do for everybody. So, and I've always lived by that rule.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I don't have a problem with, with that, but we, but one thing we do need to remember is that 100% of the TGT funds are, the chance comes from Ottawa.
No, they come from Franklin County bed tax.
Well, but every, every.
There's going to be a motel being built just north here in not too long. Just keep that in mind.
At this time, at this time, every establishment that has a bed tax is in the city of Ottawa. Also, and I, and I had also considered the, the fact that Franklin County could, we as a county, those are, are corners. You know, we could, you know, take responsibility for them.
I would go for that too.
This is Commissioner Howard. I don't have a question. Paul, I just have a comment to put in on this. I'm personally totally against using the transient guest tax for this. I think it's a very poor use of the, the transient guest tax. Derek's the attorney. He knows more about it. To me, it borderlines whether it's even appropriate, but definitely, as he said, it does borderline, but it probably could be considered appropriate, but I think it's a poor use of the money. If we stop and look back, we gave 75,000 in transit guest tax to the Legacy Square for the downtown area. A few years ago, we gave $5,000 to the team park on the south end. We give money every year to the different parades in Ottawa and other things. Now we're talking about giving money to upkeep the street corners in Ottawa. I totally think this is the wrong use of that money. It's not a slush fund for anybody that wants money to get transit guest tax money. I think we need to take a better look at it. And I also agree with the Commissioner Stottlemyre or Commissioner Dunn, that if we are to do this, I think every town in Franklin County should get the same amount of money. There's a lot of them I know that have the, their main streets, they get the money out of their any way they can with volunteers and out of their budgets, which are a lot smaller than that area in Ottawa. So I'm against using the transient guest tax for this. And the part about the transient guest tax being for motels in the city of Ottawa, I think that's totally inappropriate. That's Franklin County transient guest tax. All right. That's all.
Really appreciate when you clearly know where a person stands and, and what they're, what they're thinking. That makes it so much easier to try and find a consensus and know where everybody's actually at. So thank you for your comment. So doesn't it sound like trying to, trying to, oh, split this item up into something we can all try and, so we can make a decision. Yeah, go ahead.
This is Derek. And sorry to cut you off. I, I would just throw out there. You talk about the corners there on the courthouse square. I do think that that is something that county staff can probably take care of. I don't know what kind of dollars that that would entail, but obviously we take great pride in that building. You know, we've talked about doing some additional things on that courthouse lawn in the future, including irrigation and new trees and landscaping. I would just throw out there that, you know, Sharon talked about the potential of a recurring request. If the county just took over those certain corners on our. If the county just took over those certain corners on our dime, I mean, that is going to save Main Street money over the long haul, and I don't know that it's going to do anything to appreciably affect the county budget, obviously, or my staff. And so, I, if it helps, I would just throw that out there.
Okay. So, kind of looking at it, going back, there were, I see four kind of ways forward. One would be a sustaining donation, which it doesn't sound like there's interest in. I'm just going to go ahead and go out on a limb. It doesn't sound like we're going to get a consensus for a sustaining, every-year donation. Maybe the option of a one-time payment for the requested amount, or another amount, for us to, going down the list, for us to just maintain our two corners there at the courthouse. And then the fourth option would just be to pass, to not do anything. The, I do want to point out, you know, it was brought up, the idea of turning our corner to brick, that's not, that's a public right of way. Survey pins are not out there, so that's not ours to decide or do. That would have to come from the city. But, just like, you know, anybody who lives in town knows that it's not your ground, but we can maintain it, the area between the sidewalk and the street, the parking. So, it's well within our rights to maintain and landscape it. So, I got to say, from Sharon's presentation, I really, some positives, go back to that. I really like the idea of a continuous, the continuity, the look all throughout downtown, matching and looking sharp. And then realizing that it needs to be more sustainable, that that's a lot of work, all those corners. And, yeah, it's not a, doesn't sound too bad this time of year, but when it gets to be July and August, it's hard to find people who want to go do that. But circling back, kind of our four options, we outlined here, really three, I don't think there's appetite for a sustaining contribution. Let's start at the top. Like I said, Howard, Commissioner Howard was kind enough to clearly know where he stands. Let's go through the list. Let's start with Commissioner Stotlermeyer. What are your, what are your thinking? What are you leaning towards? Which option?
I kind of like what Derek said. I think that'd be our way to, to control and not open the door, and just take care of our corners. We'd spend $1,000, I'm sure. And if we take care of the water, and the grooming, and the redoing, and I'm sure we'd spend our $1,000. That'd be just two corners that could scratch off their list, and that'd be two corners that wouldn't have to maintain during the summertime, if our people would just take it over.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you. Thanks for stating that. Commissioner Dickinson?
I would, I do have a question for Sharon.
Commissioner Ian, are you on?
Oh, sorry.
We'll come back to Ian. Commissioner Dunn?
I'm here, I'm here. I'm sorry.
I agree with...
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ian.
Okay.
Yep, go ahead, Ian.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I did have one question for Sharon.
Ian, go ahead. Let's go.
Well, I can hear Ian, but apparently, the others can't.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I still can, but I can't hear you.
I can hear.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right. I had a question for Sharon.
What's your question?
Is, does the city pay for the water that is used on the corners?
Yes, yes, they do.
Okay. That's what I, that's what I had thought, that they just use the city water to water those corners. I would go with either taking over those corners, or if we did make a contribution, to maybe not make a matching contribution, but make a contribution to each of the cities in the county. So, either one of those, I would be great, I would be great with. And that's it.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Dunn, what do you think?
This is Commissioner Dunn. I agree with Don. I think we can just take over the corners at the courthouse square, and I'd be doing our part to kind of help out. And I think that'd be a pretty good contribution to Main Street.
All right. Well, Sharon, it looks like we have a, we'll still vote on it, but it looks like, right now, we have a consensus to take care of our corners, which, the ones there on the courthouse square, which luckily, one of those you mentioned is one of the worst ones. So, that would be taken off your plate. If we do that, I definitely would like to, I like the idea of the continuity and sustainability. So, I want to buy into, you know, your vision there of what you're laying out for the downtown area, and make sure ours match, and we're going along with what, what the committee has come up with.
Okay.
So...
So, then we will take that off.
Maybe not exactly your request, but still, hopefully, go ahead. Didn't mean to cut you off.
We'll take that off of our work list for this coming weekend, and look forward to seeing the county get those spruced up right away. That would be fantastic.
All right. Well, maybe not your exact request, but still, hopefully, a one-for-the-win column. So, with that, we'd look for, just to make it official, make sure we're all on the same page, a motion, if this is the way we want to go, for us to, the county to staff to maintain the Fourth and Main and Fifth and Main corners in front of the courthouse, landscaping there. Is there a motion to that effect?
I have one question before we vote. Sharon, you said that one of those corners was already, somebody else was already doing that. Is that going to be a problem?
I was thinking the same thing. No, I don't, I don't know. Hopefully, there's plenty of other corners for, it's Stan Schiffler is the one that has done that one. And we can, if he's willing, we can certainly shift him to one of the corners that has not been spoken for. So, I, you know, you never know how people are going to respond, but I would be hopeful that he would be fine with that.
Okay. Good question, Ian. Well, we'll work with him, and I guess up to that amount of the maintenance is what we'd be signing up for. Somebody like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that we direct our staff to move on taking care of those corners, and trying to get them fixed up, and redone, and work with the Main Streets. And if it's something we need to coordinate with, to try and not be something totally different, to do so.
All righty. Is there a second?
Mr. Dunn, second.
All right.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stotlermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
I just want to say, with the motion there, I will vote yes on this.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. Good. Well, we were able to find some common ground there, so. Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yeah, go ahead, Roy.
Commissioner Dunn, the corners are Third and Main and Fourth and Main, not Fifth and Main.
Yeah, I was off, I was off the block, wasn't I? Okay. In front of the courthouse, courthouse, courthouse square corners. All right.
So, we, we did have some landscaping plans, and I, if I knew who to share those with, Derek, if you could just email me that information, we will get that to them, and you can do with that as you like. And I will relay the information that we don't have to worry about that corner anymore, or those corners, I should.
I will put you in touch with my maintenance director just after the meeting this morning.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. I appreciate your committee and the vision you have for downtown, and it is the heart of our community. So, are you happy with everything came out today?
You know, the proof is in the pudding.
Okay.
So, yeah, if that works out that way, then as long as the corners get cleaned up and looking good, then I will be as happy as can be. Thank you.
All right, then. Thanks. That brings us down to staff reports. Let's start with Derek.
Derek, are you on? All right. I am on. We are, with regard to our coronavirus response, we are on the cusp of entering into Phase Three, per what was the governor's plan, the most recent rendition of that plan. Phase Three was slated to begin on June 8th. We had a meeting last night with representatives from all of the cities whereby we explained to them where we're at, what the plan is at this point. That meeting occurred, obviously, after, I've had numerous meetings with county staff. At this juncture, there is nothing that we see that keeps us from recommending to the board that we go ahead and transition into Phase Three on Monday, June 8th. That could all change in the next five days. It really depends, you know, what comes down the pipe. But at this point, it's looking good. And in terms of Phase Three and what that entails, this is oversimplifying maybe just a touch, but not that much. Phase Three is basically a reopening. All businesses, all events, all activities, all, everything is allowed in Phase Three. The one limitation, there is a 45-person mass gathering limit. That being said, though, as I've said numerous times, particularly now that the county is in control of this, and this is a county order, that mass gathering limit will only apply if you cannot maintain a safe distance of six feet in between people. And so, you think about a baseball tournament out at Orlis Cox, provided you can keep six feet of distance between everyone, you could have 500 people out there. The only time that limit comes into play is if, for example, you are in a building where maintaining separation is not possible. And if you, let's say you can only maintain three feet of distance, well, at that point, then that 45-person limit will come into effect. And so, call last night went great, got good questions. We've had a lot of questions in my office about the fairs and other activities. At this point, if we get into Phase Three, and for the duration of Phase Three, there is not a restriction, or anything prohibiting fairs from occurring, but we are asking that individuals responsible for those events work with the Health Department, work with Nick Robbins, work with Dr. Bud Ransom, on creating a plan to help maintain the health and safety of the patrons that are in attendance at those events. And so, that's where we're at, in terms of our workforce re-entry plan. We have a Phase Three. Basically, under this phase, we, I am allowing us to resume our normal work schedules. I am not requiring that we do so. As I've said for several weeks now, I have certain staff members that are working from home. They are working from home successfully. If it is the desire of their department heads that they continue to work at home, I am certainly not going to rush them back. I think we have learned a lot about our operations during this pandemic. I think we've learned that we are overstaffed in some offices, and certainly, we're going to look at that as we continue to move forward into subsequent budget years. I think we have learned that certain departments are able to work from home and do so very successfully, and I think we'll continue to look at that as a practice as we move forward. In terms of the visitor's center, my thoughts on that haven't changed. I just, I get squeamish thinking about the nature of that facility, and the fact that we know coronavirus spreads via travel. There is a reason why all of these travel restrictions are in place. When you look at the fact that the facility is ran by a group of volunteers, every single member of which is part of a vulnerable population, it just seems like something that could lead to dire consequences if we were to open it back up right now. And so, my intention is to recommend that that facility remain closed. I've said several times, in terms, the old courthouse is open back up. I know a couple of our elected officials are ready to bring all of their staffs back. Certainly, that is within their purview. I've said over and over, what the elected officials do is entirely within the purview of that elected official. That's not my call as the administrator. That's not your call as the county commissioners. And so, should any one of those elected officials want to continue with modified hours, or continuing shift work, they are certainly allowed to do that. But we will largely, as we get into Phase Three, resume what our quote-unquote "normal operation" looks like. You have any questions for me about any of that?
This is Don, Derek. Has there been any conversation when you talk to the cities? I know several of them have fairly large events, but they're not until August and September. Would be being, if things go good, I say if they go good, would be be in Phase Four, and there's no, no mention of numbers in Phase Four on the state plan?
Yeah. If things continue to progress like they are, Phase Four, or Phase Out period, as it's called, would begin on June 22nd. And you're right, per the state's plan, there is not a limit on mass gatherings at that point. Now, there's nothing that prevents us from putting one in place if we think it's appropriate, but at that point, per the current plan, there is no, there is no number. So, and we had good questions. The Mayor Elaine was on the phone, Mayor Rantoul, they had good questions about their events. And the hope is, we continue to squash this, and that those events are allowed to occur as intended. And so, we're, fingers crossed, that's where we're going to be here in the next couple of months.
So, conversation is, if everything goes great, possibly by July or August, things will be back. I ain't saying they're back to normal. I'm just saying, events could operate as, with caution, as they have in the past.
Yeah, I would say that's a fair description. I appreciate the "with caution." I do think that we are going to continue strongly encouraging social distancing, strongly encouraging mask usage. So, it won't be completely like normal, but I don't know that you're going to see, you know, if it continues to progress, a restriction on numbers, or other heavy restrictions.
I guess, what I was thinking about, where it's close, a couple of the closest ones is Wellville Days and a parade, and downtown on Saturday night during the car show. That's the only two that would really be tough to manage, and, you know, half the hell, tough to manage.
Yeah. And I think, as you start getting back into the fall, and I don't know if we've got Dr. Bud on the phone this morning or not, find that out easy enough. Certainly, Nick can discuss this as well. My concern, as you start talking about getting... Certainly Nick can discuss this as well. My concern, as you start talking about getting into September, I, I think we all believe we're going to see a resurgence of COVID-19 in the fall. Will it happen in September, or will that be too soon, I think is anyone's guess. But just off the cuff, Don, that would be my concern right now is, are we getting back closer to that resurgence period at that point? I mean, I think late June, July, and August, the hope is that, you know, we're in the dead of summer, that this is largely squelched. But as the temperatures start cooling off and as your other seasonal flus start popping back up, the fear is that this is going to do the same and that we're going to have to be looking at restrictions again. But it's just so hard and, and frankly impossible to predict where we're going to be at that point in time.
This is Commissioner Howard. I just wanted to make a comment on, on what you had to say there, Derek. Um, I was watching, of course, we've all watched tons of different, uh, doctors and so forth on TV talking about this, but I watched a couple different ones this morning before our meeting, and both of them said that they don't see that the heat is going to do anything to slow this, that it's, uh, other countries has had high humidity and heat continued to on the rise. So, um, I think they've all, if we get one thing out of all of them we listened to, they all pretty much say we're going to be dealing with this until there's a vaccine that works, so.
This is Commissioner, Commissioner Dickinson. Just a couple of comments. I am very disappointed in a couple of our large counties in the state of Kansas who have chosen not to impose any restrictions at all, which could really make a difference, especially one that neighbors us very closely, um, that, that could make a difference in the numbers in our area. Um, also, I do want to make a comment that I did appreciate the fact that you involved, um, the leaders of all of the cities in the county, um, to get input as you're moving forward.
Uh, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Like one of our first events coming up pretty soon is, uh, Richmond Fair, which is, you know, just, just around the corner. Are, are the fairs going to be out, or, depends on the twenty-second of June?
Yeah, and, and I, I had that discussion with Doyle Soba, who's trying to, I think, quarterback that fair. Um, a- and he asked, you know, should we cancel? And I told him, and this has been a couple of weeks ago now, that i- it might be premature to cancel. Because again, if, if we get even come Monday in phase three, fairs are technically allowed pursuant to our plan. And I know that the Franklin County Fair, um, they've done a great job of trying to work through solutions to keep the public safe. And I believe that Doyle and those folks down in Richmond will do the same thing. And so I, you know, if we're going to continue to follow the plan we've been following, there, there's nothing in it that would warrant us telling, uh, even a fair that's to occur in late June, that it can't happen. We would just encourage social distancing, mask usage. And I say all of this with the caveat that this could change tomorrow. I mean, what we say today could be different by, not even tomorrow, by the end of today. This has just changed so fast. And so, but if, and it's a big if, but if we continue on this trajectory, there's no reason why we can't, um, have some of these events, albeit exercising appropriate practices involving social distancing and mask usage.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Derek?
The only question I have, and this is for the commissioners, um, I know you talked last week about, um, board meetings and when to, um, start having those in person. I am more interested today in how you want to handle budget meetings. Um, we are scheduled, um, to sit down with you as we do every year here in approximately two weeks. Is that something that you want to plan on doing in person? Should we continue on this trajectory? Do you want us to do it via technology? What are your thoughts on that?
Uh, Commissioner Howard.
Go ahead, Commissioner Howard.
Just my thought on that is, like you said earlier, um, this could change, it changing daily, it could change by the end of day or two weeks out. Um, I'd say as, as we get closer, um, see where we're at and then possibly make that call. Um, a lot could happen in two-week time. I'm not saying we need to go right up till the day before we're scheduled, but give it a week or so and then figure, see where we're at.
Okay, Commissioner Dunn, you had a comment?
Yes, I had a in-person meeting with area agency on aging, uh, policy board, uh, Friday, and it went well and was all separated. So, uh, uh, I'm ready to get back together in person.
All right, Commissioner Stottlemyre?
I agree with both of them. Rick, as like you said, I think we're planning on, not quoting, we're planning on meeting face-to-face, spread out, next meeting, and maybe we can make that decision there when we're all face, we're all in the same room.
All right, Commissioner Dickinson, any comments?
I would, Commissioner Dickinson, I would be, uh, okay e- either way, but I would probably prefer to be in person.
All right. All right, anything else, Derek? That's all I have. Colt, thanks. All right, Casey, are you on?
I'm here, Casey.
Sure can, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so really quick, while we were talking about events, I did start reaching out to all of the, um, events that applied for TGT funds yesterday and have a few more to reach out to today, just to kind of see, um, what their plans are moving forward. A few that I talked to yesterday, some of them have a rescheduled date, some of them are just reevaluating when they might reschedule. And then, um, I started with earlier events, so ones that maybe have already passed. Um, but the ones coming up in the, in July timeframe, I feel like most are, um, hoping to keep their event dates. So, more to come on that, but, um, we will be giving some TGT funds. But first want to see overall what everybody's plans are before we make any decisions. And then, second, um, as things have started to maybe calm down a little bit with COVID, I want to reevaluate or kind of get ideas from the commissioners and maybe the general public, what people want to see as far as daily communications go, or, um, can we switch that maybe one, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or just when there's pressing, pressing issues? Um, wanted to get your all thoughts on that. I also mentioned to Derek, maybe I could send out a survey to the community. And I am totally not opposed to still continue doing a daily update every day, but I don't want it to get redundant and people just to quit looking at it because they're seeing the same thing over and over.
All right, um, let's go down the list. Uh, Commissioner Stottlemyre, are you, what do you think as far as communication on COVID, daily, weekly, or just as needed?
Oh, you know, it's even like the state now only reports three times a week.
That's what, yeah, I kind of think Monday, Wednesday, Friday is a good, like,
Yeah.
calm down from every day, but we're still doing more than just like weekly.
Well, getting into something like we had before is different, but I think it'd be going with the state's plan with that, too. It'd be fine.
All right, Commissioner Howard?
Yeah, I think, uh, the Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and maybe with the update on Sunday night's fine. I, I do know that several people, um, when I see, are making comments like, well, we see that, uh, Franklin County had this or that. So, I, I'm sure it's being looked at by quite a few people. So, I'm fine with going with the, with what the state's doing too, so.
Okay, good. Glad to, glad to hear people using it, Commissioner Dickinson?
This, yeah, this is Commissioner Dickinson, and I'm fine with not having it daily. Um, if the information is available on, in different sources, whether we put it out or not, if, if somebody really wants to know, you know, the, absolutely up to date. Um, if we start, if the numbers start changing rapidly, then we can go back to more often, but I, I'm fine with not having it every day.
You agree, Commissioner Dunn?
I agree, three times a week isn't enough.
Okay, as do I, whenever, I don't think we need it every day. Anything else, Casey?
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thanks, Alan. Do you have anything new to report? I'll come back to Alan. Nick, do you have anything new to report?
This is Nick. The only thing I have to report is, we, uh, we have been utilizing the command trailer. It has been sitting on the south side of the annex. Um, we've been communicating through our tracings that we've been doing for some positive. We've been fortunate to still able to trace almost every case of COVID that's came through Franklin County, which is, which is really good to be as far into this as we are and still able to do that. With that, I will inform you that we did start doing, um, a lot of testing on first responders. We have been able to open it up, so any first responder, um, does have the option of obtaining a, a COVID test. So, that started, uh, yesterday, and I'm hoping that we'll see, uh, them take advantage of that. Other than that, we're full staffed at the department, EMS, as we need to be, and we're staffed at nine-one-one. Uh, for nine-one-one, we are getting a new recording system from the state, which will eliminate the two, uh, recorders we have now that record the phone and the radios that we won. Emergency management worked hard for us, actually, sold today. So, that'll make life easier when we only have to go to one device to get recordings for both the phone and the radios. So, that's a great upgrade. Uh, we, uh, are, other than that, operating normal. We are seeing increase in call volumes for EMS. Uh, those are starting to speed back up, so starting to get back to where we were at before COVID.
Okay. Any questions for Nick?
Uh, this is Commissioner Dunn. Uh, Nick, what's the turnaround on, um, the testing? How soon can you get results?
The vast majority of our results are coming back within twenty-four and thirty-six hours. We've sent to, uh, KDHE West. Uh, we've seen results that can take twenty-four to thirty-six, and then we've had a couple that have taken out to three or four days. So, I think it's the influx that they get at the time. But with KDHE, we're still seeing a really good turnaround of about twenty-four to thirty-six. We barely see anything over forty-eight hours.
This is, this is Commissioner Dickinson, and this is not a question but a comment. Uh, I did hear yesterday, and I didn't realize this, that, um, the Ottawa Police Department is actually running those tests to Topeka twice a day as needed. Is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, the beginning of this, um, the Ottawa Police Department had some people on light duty or had some, um, individuals available, and they volunteered to take those result, or those tests up twice a day for us. And they've been a great partner. But I'm, as you pointed out, I've forgotten that, but yes, they have done a great job for us.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nick. Uh, Alan Ratcliffe, are you on? All right. Sheriff Richards?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, uh, we did have Deputy Jimmy Reader retired on, uh, Friday. His actual, his actual last day was, with us was yesterday, but we had a retirement on Friday. Uh, Mr. Dickinson, um, came over and attended and, uh, wished him luck, and we appreciated her, her being there. Um, our calls for service have increased, uh, greatly as well. Um, part of that is people were tired of being cooped up. Part of it is the weather's getting nicer, and it's just that kind, that time of year, uh, that we, where we typically start seeing more activity. Um, what that has done for us, though, with, uh, the pandemic going on, is that our jail count, as you know, we were down in the thirties to low forties on our inmate counts, and now we're up in the fifties. Um, we're still have our, um, procedures in place where we're doing all of our screening. Um, it's becoming more challenging as far as the, how we're quarant, able to quarantine, uh, inmates, um, before they go to general population. But we're still doing that at this, at this time. We're still able to, to maintain. Um, but as it gets busier, um, the courts have reopened. Um, so some of the directives that we had as far as, uh, not transporting, uh, people from other facilities and place, things like that on, uh, on low-level warrants, those things have, uh, have changed, and we're back to doing those things more as business as usual. So I do suspect that our, our counts are going to get, get much higher, which is going to create a little bit more problems for our, uh, correction staff, as quarantine process goes. But, um, other than that, we're still, we're still moving, moving ahead, uh, operating at, you know, at full capacity, and we're, uh, kind of continuing on, and we'll just take it, take it as it goes as far as that jail count. Um, but it, other than that, if any, uh, commissioners have any questions for me, then I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for the sheriff? All right. Thank you, Jeff. Janet, are you on?
Yes, thanks. Uh, this is Janet. I just wanted to let you guys all know, as, as you already know, the filing deadline, um, passed to file for office. It was Monday, um, and we got quite a few filings for treasurer and trustees of the townships and precinct committee people. So, we are finalizing those lists, and then we will start, um, putting those out for everyone to see, but we have to get them all updated. And so when we receive requests, we can fill those as they come. So, working on getting those all done. Now we can really focus on the administration of the election, um, which we have a lot of things working on that. I think I've mentioned to you guys before that we were planning to send out a mailer for advanced ballots. So, as people in our community feel the need to vote from home this time, so that they don't potentially expose themselves to the virus, or if they feel like they're in a vulnerable population. So, that mailer is scheduled to go out either Thursday or Friday of this week. So, people should start seeing that in their mailbox up early next week. I would encourage anyone who has any questions to give my office a call. We'll be happy to help you through that, filling out the applications, if you have any questions about that, or getting them back to us. Um, you can always feel free to drop it off out front in the drop box, um, bring it into the courthouse, or mail it back, however you see fit to get it back to us. We already have had a lot of our own people filling those out. So, we're also, uh, getting things set up to have, uh, safer environment with the virus still presenting itself in the fall and winter months this year, as we assume. So, setting up hand sanitizing stations and things like that to be prepared at our polling locations. So, as I've mentioned before, there will be some changes with our polling locations, and we are trying to finalize with all the polling locations, who is willing to be open, and if we need to move any, or, um, just close some in general. So, um, you'll be seeing information on that, and everyone should definitely watch their mailboxes for information from my office.
All right. Thanks, Janet. Uh, did hear from Alan. He didn't have anything new to report. Uh, David Lee, Public Works?
Good morning, commanders. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sure can, go ahead.
All right. Uh, so, the Bridge Chawney Road is almost complete. Uh, in fact, they pulled the forms off the, uh, the final bit of concrete that they poured. They did that yesterday, and they opened up the coffer downs to allow the water to start flowing through. Uh, we're going to let the concrete cure for a couple more days before we open that, uh, open the road, uh, which we anticipate doing on Friday afternoon. Uh, and then all that will remain is doing some, uh, some grading work on either side of the bridge to, uh, to straighten that out. Uh, so then we'll move on to the structure on Ohio south of Haskell, uh, probably next week if the weather cooperates. Uh, so since last week's meeting, we've hauled rock to six of the nine blade districts. Um, and one of the roads that we, uh, rocked last week was Virginia Terrace, uh, south of Lane. Also, uh, as I mentioned last week, uh, we were going to start working on the, the Rocky Hills, uh, south of Pam south of Pomona. We've had two blade operators working together to pull the usable material from the ditches. They've been working on Arkansas Terrace between Marshall and Kingman, and they're currently working on Alabama Terrace between Lebette and Jackson. We've had a couple of, well, both of our backhoes out doing the same type of work. We've had one backhoe on Rock Creek between California Terrace and Alabama Terrace, pulling material there. And then we've had another one kind of bouncing around in the southeast part of the county, pulling material from ditches. So we're about got all of our equipment out and all of our personnel. Just to update you, we have written or received over, well, 730 work orders so far this year. That's a current number as of yesterday, and we've completed 511 of those work orders. So our folks have been extremely busy, and will continue to be busy trying to clean up after last year's storm. So that's, that's it in a nutshell for the Road and Bridge Department. I do want to mention, I don't often talk about our shop mechanics, but they do an amazing job for us. And a couple of things that they're working on right now, they have sanded and repaired and currently painting one of our end dumps. You know, as you can imagine, with the, the amount of rock that we haul, those things, those get beat up pretty, pretty good each year. And so we try to take a few of them each year and repair them, clean them up, so that they, you know, will last for years to come. They are also working on a, they're going to build this in-house, is a culvert cleaner. And so they're assembling the, the parts and pieces and manufacturing this. And once they get done, if it works properly, they'll be able to attach it to the backhoe and work from the road where they can stick that, that culvert cleaner in, and with some paddles that will expand and be able to pull the silt and rock and other things that get trapped in those culverts, be able to pull that out. It would be, if it works, it would be a much, much better situation than, than what we have currently to work with. And if it does work, we'll be, we'll build another attachment that will hook up to our skid steers, so we'll have a few more options. So that is, that's what we've been doing lately.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners' comments, board reports, Commissioner Dickinson?
This is Commissioner Dickinson. On Friday, I did attend the, the reception for Sheriff's Deputy Jimmy Reader, and I, I do try to go to all of those, just because I feel like somebody that is willing to give that kind of time to the county deserves recognition. On Monday, I had a Zoom food council meeting, and there, there really is food available out there. The problem is getting it to the people that really need it. I think that they feel like the city of Ottawa, they're doing a pretty good job, but it's, it's, it's how do we get this food that's available out into the outlying rural areas? They, because we are now expanding into Phase Two, they are opening, they were doing that with the weekly food distribution, which they had only confined to a couple of senior facilities in Ottawa. They're starting to expand that back out, back out just so that we can serve some of the smaller communities. I did go to the City of Princeton meeting on Monday night, which they actually had in person, but they had it at the Community Building so they could safely distance. And they are still working on, you know, small-town issues. They had a couple of fundraising things that they had to cancel because of COVID, and so they're still trying to do some fundraising to finish their playground, especially the basketball court. Some water issues in town, they're trying to work through. I did not go to it, but I did listen to the City of Ottawa study session on Monday. And one of the things that came out of that, which was surprising to them and surprising to me, is that the sales tax numbers, at least initially, have not decreased, and they're not exactly sure why, maybe because people are staying in county. So I guess shopping local is important. We always talk about that. But they were kind of surprised that their numbers are, are really staying right there or even increased from last year. One thing that they are seeing a little bit of an increase on is people paying their utilities because of job situations. So that's something, but they are, they are definitely working with people that have, as long as they go in there and, and, you know, try to make arrangements. They're willing to do that. So if you can't pay your bills, don't just ignore them, but go in and, and try to make arrangements. They're willing to do that, and that's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah, I was involved in a Zoom visual meeting last week with Solid Waste Authority, Lake Region. That was our first meeting with our new coordinator. She's really, we think she's really doing good, and she's finding a lot of things to keep her busy, even though we can't meet face-to-face. We did have election officers again. J.R. McMahon will be the president again for the next year, and then I'll be the chairman of the management team for the Lake Region again next year. David was on there, too. Peggy had short of health that day since he wasn't been able to, to be on it, but it was pretty successful, and wouldn't want to have to do every meeting that way, but, but it worked real good, and it wasn't bad. And I did contact all three of my county cities and my county towns, and my district, and told them all as soon as we went to Phase Three that I would be coming back and attending the meetings, by kind of waiting for us to get into Phase Three. Why should I go in there and take the place of a constituent that lives in the town, you know? Because I know even in Rantoul, they limit it to 10, and that's it, you know? So why should I go down there and take the place of a, of a city resident that wants to be at a meeting? So I told, I informed them all that as we go into Phase Three, that I would be going back and attending meetings. That's it.
All right, thanks, Don. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, I have a, I have a comment for David. The perpetual pothole north of the, on 59 Highway, north of the railroad bridge on the southbound lane has reopened. This, this pothole has water or something coming underneath it, and it, whatever they put in it last time worked real well, but it's opening up again. So that's a little, little statement for David. I did go to Area Agency and on-agency meeting on Friday. The biggest discussion was they want to put a garage out at the Radage Patch Meals on Wheels Preparation Building out there in the North Industrial Park. They want to be able to load the vans from inside, inside a building instead of outside. And it's a pretty big structure. It's about 70 by 60. So they're looking at bids for that and how to do it, and to accommodate eight of their delivery vans. So it's kind of a big endeavor, but it'd be better for the Meals on Wheels distribution. Everything else is going pretty good down there, and they're suggesting to go in 19, just like everybody else. That's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Howard?
I haven't been to really any other meetings since our last meeting. I did talk to the mayor out of Williamsburg, the sawmill that we've talked about in the past that's supposed to be coming to Williamsburg. They're still in the process of, of doing that. There's probably going to be some changes to it. They advised that there's been some sawmills closed down because of the virus, and they've moved equipment from some of those that's closed down and to other places, and some of that equipment may come here. It may affect exactly what their plans are for here, but he didn't know exactly what they were looking for as far as employees at this time. But he said they are still planning on coming. There just may be some changes because of all this to what they originally were going to do. And that's all I have.
All right. I don't have anything new to add. Our next meeting is in one week. Is there a motion to adjourn?
One question.
Okay, go ahead, Roy.
Is it going to be a meeting in-house for all of us? Are we going to be on the phone?
Derek, this next meeting was the one we were planning on, everybody coming back, correct? That is what was said last week, yes. All right, then, that's, I don't see any reason to change, so.
Okay.
All right. Okay. I think Commissioner Howard made the motion, and Roy just jumped in with a second. So all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.